Just for the at-home audience, we are taping this and will be on our website because we want to make this whole process transparent. So just to let the viewing audience know that the last search firm that we're going to be interviewing tonight is the MAS B. And I'll turn it over to you, but you might want to just wait a minute until Joe comes back.
Sure, absolutely. I'll just say my wife, because I've worked so long in schools and school boards, my wife knows never to expect me home when I say I'm going to be home.
I'm newly remarried and my husband is learning this.
Yes. Oh, I should, I'll be home by 10:00, don't worry about it.
Or usually I just tell him 11:00 and then he's pleasantly surprised when I come home early.
I think I'd have learned that by now.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you again and thank you for your patience.
Happy to do it, I understand. And I'm Tom White and I'm with the Michigan Association of School Boards. I am the Senior Search Consultant with MAS B. I'll tell you a little bit about myself, but I want to introduce my colleague or have him introduce himself.
Jay Bennett, also a consultant with Michigan Association of School Boards.
Right. And I give you a little background into me is I was a school board member for 19 years on the RISA, the Clinton County RISA, so I had 19 years in as a school board member. I basically worked in education my entire life. Started as a labor negotiator with the Michigan Association of School Boards back in the 1970s. And I know I don't look old enough, but started doing labor negotiations back then, did that for 10 years. I spent 10 years as the Director of Government Relations for the Michigan Association of School Boards, moved from that to become the Executive Director of the Michigan School Business Officials. So I ran that organization for 11 years before I retired from that. And then I've been doing consulting work with MAS B for the past five years roughly. I did a fair amount of labor relations for them even as a retirement job until recently. And I said, I think that's not a good retirement job. So when I say I'm used to being waiting for school boards, you know how it is with labor negotiations, you're always the last thing on the agenda. And then you'd say to the Board President, what time will I be on? And they'd say, oh, 8:00 o'clock. And it would end up being 11:00 o'clock. So it's not unfamiliar to me that things, you know, go this way. And I was a Board President for five years on my school board, so I know how things go. And I tell you that only to give you kind of a context for understanding what we bring to the table. I was a school board member for 19 years and Jay's a school board member right now in Grand Ledge. And we'd be the people who'd be conducting this search and very happy to come down and present to you. I'm going to go through some things pretty quickly because I think you've probably seen some similar material through the evening that we're going to present. I know that we have a system that we use that is not unlike what, at least I know MLI, and I'm not sure how Metro View does it, but I think there's a lot of commonality there. And, you know, I can tell you we do it the best, but the reality is that there's a lot of good folks doing this type of work. And, you know, you just hire somebody who's good and looks like me and you'll be fine. But, so, it does come down to being almost a personal fit between a board and a consultant in this case. So I'm going to, I'll run through this pretty quickly. I know I sent this stuff down last week and I know that Brian showed me, you have the materials in there. And I'm going to do the, first I'm going to do the PowerPoint. And please stop me if there's questions because otherwise I don't want to be redundant with things that you've already, that you've already covered adequately. Basically, and I'll just skip through some of this, what's MAS B bringing to the table? Well, what we bring to the table is that we are your association. All we do is work for school boards. All I've done basically my whole life, life has worked for school districts. But MAS B, you know, we are your organization. We've been doing this for 30 years and have successfully placed 400 superintendents. So we've got a rich tradition, rich history of doing this type of search. And, you know, I can say we know our way around pretty well. And the things I don't know, I can go to Donna, who you may have spoken to, and having us come down here, I'm not sure, but Donna Osir, who was a former PTA president and ran the PTA for a number of years, is the, is my boss, is the Director of the Search Services. So we bring a lot to the table in terms of just different perspectives and really bringing a school board perspective to it. And we've got a very extensive network, not just in the state, certainly in the state, we're real well-connected, but nationally. And I'll show you a slide that tells you something about that. I won't go through the context of the search so much, just to say that there are anywhere from 50 to 100 searches in Michigan every year. And so, you know, I won't, you know, you, there's just a lot of work to it. I mean, there's a lot of school boards that are going through what you're going through. I've done three searches this year. I'm kind of in the middle of one of my search, the third search, and this would be my fourth. But a lot of, lots of school boards go through this. And I found it myself a very stressful thing as a Board President to replace a superintendent, especially one who's been as popular and done as good a job as Brian has here. Skip over that. This is sort of what I was saying before, beholden only to you. All we're here for is to represent school boards and working on, working on getting the right fit. We're not kingmakers, you know, I'm not out there looking, I'm not out there kind of working with people, you know, plugging people in through a good old boy network or a good old girl network. Our job is to make sure you get a good fit. That's our pure objective. One of the things we pride ourselves is, last bullet point, ever mindful of the laws and public perception. It is a very transparent process that we use, transparent to a fault. And we're very, very cognizant and probably, again, if anything, we err to the side of openness when it comes to the Open Meetings Act. If any of you know Brad Van Assack on our staff, he's the guy who just, he knows absolutely everything about the Open Meetings Act. If you've never called Brad with a question, then you're one of the few board members in the state who hasn't. But he's the person who gives us guidance on how to make sure we stay within the law as well as he's one of the most ethical people I've ever met. Search process. This is very, I mean, this can vary. Turnkey support throughout preparation phase in that, you know, just, everything depends on people's schedules when you get down to this point as to, you know, who's going on vacation when and making things happen. But basically you can see the preparation phase, one to three weeks, and that would be us coming down here for a meeting to kind of walk you through the process and prepare you to do the process. The recruitment phase, which actually starts the day that you hire us, I put up a, what I call a placeholder posting. So we'll talk a little bit about what we do for the more comprehensive posting. But especially in a district like this, especially, you're not late in the game, but it's getting a little later in the year. You want people to know it's open. Now, obviously, anybody in state knows it's open. So we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, we got some free advertising.
You got some free advertising. But as we're going out nationally, because this is a district, you know, I use the term a destination district, this is a district somebody's going to come to and spend a long time. And, I mean, this is, this isn't, very few people move on from districts like this. Brian is an exception. People come to a place like Dearborn and they stay a place like Dearborn. Because you, there's not, in Michigan, there's not a lot of better jobs that come available on a regular basis. So for a certain type of superintendent, this is an end game. And that's the person that we want to look for, I would anticipate. Looking for them within state, but with the profile you have, the size of the district you are, the complexity of this district, you definitely want to do, plug in nationally as well. So some things could take a little longer. And you see the recruitment phase, four to 10 weeks. Basically, once we start, I put the placeholder posting up and then by and by we'll get to the more comprehensive one. Interview phase, weeks 11, 12, somewhere around that. Decision phase, week 13. So you can pretty much figure that it's going to be a good three months actually before you, to get everything done, unless we expedite it somehow. But somewhere in that range. Preparation phase, this is really an important aspect of what we do. And again, I think that there are, I don't know how we stack up with the other firms exactly, but I think everybody does a lot of the same things. We do an online survey, so it's very important for us that your community feel involved and that that involvement is meaningful. So to make sure everybody can participate, we have an online survey that we, that we have crafted. And we can share that with you in advance. And if you want to put specific questions on for your district, easy enough to do. But we have a survey that we've used in a number of districts already, so that anybody who wants to have input can have input. Sometimes you don't get very many people commenting, sometimes you get hundreds. But that is always there. Face-to-face conversations, and this is probably one of the more important aspects that I'm finding in superintendent searches, is that involving your community and involving your staff. So we will conduct an extensive kind of focus group. We'd sit down with you at the very first meeting and say, okay, who are the people who are important for us to involve and get, and to talk with about this? It can be your business community, it can be, you know, in some communities it's churches, some can, you know, it just can be any variation on that of who you'd like to get involved in this conversation. A lot of it is on staff, because your staff is, they've got a lot in the game here as well. So we're very, spend a fair amount of time making sure we get input from the staff. So I might hold like a meeting with your central office staff, a meeting with your principals, a meeting with your representatives from your teachers' union, all your other unions, and basically to make sure that all employees have some opportunity to provide input. Then we do the public input. So typically that will be one or more meetings where you have a kind of a public, you do it publicly and invite people in. As Board Members, you might want to have, you might want to have more than one in a district this size, but say two or three of those where you're coming down, come down in the evening, 6:00 o'clock or something, and go through a set of questions with them. And basically ask them, you know, what are the great things that are going on here? What are the, what are the challenges that we have here? And then talk with them about the profile that they'd like to see in a superintendent. What are the characteristics? What's the background of that individual that they want to see? We take, and I'm kind of jumping forward here, but we take all of that information from all of those different groups and basically compile that, share that at a public meeting and say, you know, here's the compilation of all those online surveys, of all those face-to-face conversations, et cetera. And we use that to develop the criteria for selection. So people have real, true, meaningful input. Now, there's some commonalities when you get down to, we want to hire a good superintendent, we want a good communicator, somebody who loves kids, knows education, and so on. But lots of different things pop up in those. So what I see happening is themes develop of what people are looking for. But we take all that information from your community and then, and I'm very careful to say this to folks, in the final analysis, it's the board's decision. Now, I haven't had a board yet that didn't pay tremendous attention to what their community and staff said, because it's just wise and because you get a lot of good suggestions. But we take those, we take all that data and we prepare a set of criteria. And I sent you down, I think you've got this, the ones, one that we developed for Holt, which is the last district that I'm working with this year. So you should have that. And if you don't, I do have some additional copies I can divide you. So to give you an idea of the types of criteria we use, so let me go ahead because I'm jumping, jumping on here. Well, this will be a good time to talk about, we'll skip over some other slides. So this, this criteria then serves very important purposes. I take those criteria and that's what I use to develop the comprehensive, comprehensive posting, so that we can see that we're going to get that marriage that we're looking for, that we match you up right with your potential superintendent candidates. So we have those criteria. And you decide in the final analysis, those are the criteria. So as we're going through the process, we're using those criteria constantly. We're using them to develop questions, we're using them to judge the applicants, you know, who's going to make it through the pool and from the, from the applicants, who's going to be a finalist and so on. So really an important aspect of what we do is this, this whole process, very inclusive process. And this is an example, the Holt Board was very happy with this, they worked very hard on it, I was facilitating it, Jay was helping, but the board ultimately came to these criteria on their own. And it was, it's interesting, you're not a split board, they're a split board, but we could see them coming together around the desire to have a superintendent they could all agree upon. So just found it very, very useful. Other opportunities for stakeholder input here, we call this our Rube Goldberg slide, if you ever, if any of you know him. Here's what it comes down to. Not only do we provide that opportunity at the beginning for people to have input, but through the process. So I'll talk in a few minutes about how we get the candidates, but let's just jump ahead to the interviews. So in the first round interviews, we say we have six or eight people who are interviewing in that first round. At those first round interviews, they're all public, everything's done in the public. We have a sheet that we pass out to the audience that basically says, reflect for us on how you felt this, the candidate did, write their name down, you know, you can write your name down or not, and tell us what you thought about the candidate. And tell us if there's something that you would like us to ask if this person makes it through the process to the next round. So people have a lot of opportunity for input there. The second round of interviews, when you're down to say two candidates or at most three, you hope, we actually, again, come, come down, you're conducting the program, and we pass out forms and people can write questions down that they would like the board to ask that evening. So if it's an hour and 15-minute interview, which is pretty typical, then at the one-hour mark, I'll be in the audience or Jay will be in the audience collecting those, those sheets. And then I come up with Amy, you know, we'd have a brief break and say, okay, there's, again, themes of questions. And then the Board President makes a decision about, do these questions get asked or not? But point being, people have an opportunity, your community and your staff have an opportunity to have input at that point. Again, the board's making all the final decisions. And then in the final, the final step, site visit, that's one, the boards are kind of getting away from this, I'm finding, because it's somewhat artificial to say, I'm going to go visit their district. And now, you're a big district, it might be a little, it might be different for you in truth, but you think of a small district and you're going in to talk to a principal, talk about this principal or talk about, you know, we'd like to talk to you about your superintendent. And by golly, if, if anything bad is said, then you don't want that person. But rarely is anything bad said, because they're coming in, it's not joyful exactly, but people are, you know, you go in and, and I had one case where a candidate, he had cupcakes made that were the color, school colors for the district that he was applying to, you know? I mean, so.
That would do it for me.
Would it work? But, so you get, you get that kind of thing. So an option that we've been using with a lot of districts recently is we do a walkthrough with the final candidates. So on that day that you're having the final interviews in the evening, we bring the two candidates in, say, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and we have that person escorted around the district by various folks, maybe your union president, you know, some of your administrators and whatnot. And then in the evening before the interviews, we hold a little tea and cookies and cupcakes, if you'd like, we can make that change on the fly, reception. And then people have a chance to talk to that, those candidates on a more personal basis than you get in an interview setting. So we, I've been a lot more comfortable with that than with site visits as I've been doing this work. But that's your decision. Some boards feel very strongly about the site visits. There's lots of ways to get information about people besides visiting their district though, and I just find there's others that are better. Market position, contact candidate, just the part here that I'll focus in on is, of course, we do everything, we try to do everything. You've got work to do, you've got the most serious part of the work to do, but as far as the, the background work, we do that, we check references, we screen applications. And this is an important point about how we do business. So if you, say, you know, gosh, when I was a young man, way back in that previous millennia.
Aren't you glad we didn't have the internet?
Yeah. Well, we used to get 80 applicants for a superintendency, 60 to 80. And now it's more typically 20 to 30. And in a district this size, I'm not sure, you know, you're going to draw very people, you've got a very narrow group of people who might be interested here.
The last search, we had a teacher from Peru, I think it was.
Yeah. There's, there's an art teacher somewhere in the thumb.
It's like a third grade teacher from Peru or something.
Right. This guy applies for every superintendency, every superintendent search I've ever done, his stuff is right there. And you're like, what are you thinking, man? You're an art teacher in the thumb.
Every time, the odds get better in his favor.
That's right. Sooner or later, one in a million, I'm going to keep going.
It's a numbers game.
Even a broken clock is wearing toys today.
But let's say we get 30 or 40 applicants. I will take that set of criteria and I will put them up against the applicant's information. So, so, you know, here's what, here's what you say you want. Now, I'm going to look at the application materials and I'm going to, I'm going to basically have a checklist saying, okay, where is the evidence that this person, let's talk about communication, it's pretty common, where's the evidence that that person is a good communicator? Because we all know, some people have a certain skill and that is they interview well. And interviews are one of those places where, like I was a lobbyist, we say, hey, we have a license to lie. When you interview, you can kind of, you know, the people kind of skirt around the truth sometimes. So what we do, and I think it's pretty common, is we always, we don't say, are you a good communicator? Oh, yes, I am. I happen to be a very good communicator. We look for the, we look for evidence, and we tell the candidates this. We're looking for evidence of your communication skills, we're looking for evidence of your managerial skills. So it's evidence-based hiring. So, but I'm going to take the applications and I'm going to screen it down to say, from 30 or 40, down to eight or 10. Now, a differentiator between what MAS B does and what some firms do, and I don't know exactly who does what, I just know that not everybody does it the way we do, is I'm going to let you see, if you want to, every applicant's information. Not everybody does that. We do it and we, and we, again, because we're the School Boards Association, we say, nobody's name is public until they're accepted in an interview. So we have to hold the board to confidentiality on those, on those applications. So you have that opportunity though. So I'll come down here after I've screened them and say, okay, here's the eight or 10 out of those 30 or 40 that I think are the best candidates to match up with your criteria the best. And then before we talk about narrowing it down, I say, are there any other candidates that somebody would like to put on the table? And lots of times, I'm finding there aren't, because, you know, we've developed the criteria, have a pretty good idea, I've done this before. So, but there are times when somebody says, you know, I'm really interested in candidate number 25, because we don't use names at that point, only numbers to protect their identity until they've accepted an interview. And that's one of the things is, when you do this work, you say, how, what differentiates us? That's one point that differentiates us from some people who do the search, is there, there is a, you know, these people have a lot on the line, the superintendents who apply have a lot on the line, and we do want to protect their confidentiality, but we don't want to do that to the exclusion of making sure that the board gets the candidates that they want. We're a, we are a nationwide network, you know, we're connected to, of course, the MAS A, which is right next door to us, with these different groups that you see listed here. I would probably contact NSBA, we had a woman at MAS B who went, and she's now the Director of Cube, which is the Council of Urban Superintendents. She's probably somebody I would reach out to specifically to say, do you know people who would be a good fit for Dearborn? And she knows Michigan and she knows urban superintendents, so good, good connection. But we're connected with all these organizations, we do post nationally. So, you know, if somebody's interested in coming, we'll do some reach out nationally and then if they're interested, they'll, they'll look at those national job boards. We've kind of been through that. We can use online assessment tools. So we talk about, how do you make a selection? You make a selection by the screening, using those criteria, you make a selection by the interview. But the interview is typically, my master's degree's in kind of human resource management, and oddly enough, you find that the interview is typically the least predictive measure of success of an individual. So it's, but it is one measure. And it's a good measure in schools because, because you want someone who does a good job at presenting themselves publicly. So there is a sense of reality about it. But because the interview is, is not a great predictor, that's why we do this behavioral part and look, look for the backup, for the backup to what they say about themselves. And then we also use tests, use testing as another leg of that stool, you know, background checking is another leg of it. So it's really these different things coming together that we use for making the final decision. So we work with you and really structure that how you'd like to structure it. The decision phase, probably not a lot to say about that. I mean, that's the hardest evening without question, is when we get to, you know, we do the first round interviews, I come back in after we've finished them. And basically, we, we kind of go around who likes who, you know, what, and then we talk, again, we have those criteria, how does this person fit our criteria that we've established? And we go through it, you know, and we narrow it from say eight people down to two people, ideally, six, six or eight to down to two. And then we get down to making that final choice. And again, everything's done in the public. I'm here to facilitate it, not to tell you what to do. And then we help, we will assist you with negotiating the agreement, not like an attorney assists you, but just kind of the pragmatic nuts and bolts of getting an arrangement with your superintendent for their first contract. You also need to have an attorney. We work closely with your communications, your PR folks, because, and a really important part of this, and this is why the interviewing your employees is so important, talking to them, is there's, it creates, it creates a lot of uncertainty when somebody leaves, especially somebody like Brian. And so it is, it helps to ease that person in. I mean, when, when staff know what's going on, it helps to kind of calm them, calm their, calm them down, just say, okay, here's the, here's where we're in the process, here's how we're going to do it. So we do it all very publicly with those folks and work with your internal and external PR folks. Negotiation support, we're just talking about salary comparison, I do that, just start, I would start off with that. You know, first meeting that I'd have with you, I'd bring you comparisons for, for your district and say, here's what the market looks like. Contract review, negotiation support, and open meetings compliant, we really talked about all that. We have a no surprises guarantee, which is, we do all this work and we give you a satisfaction guaranteed. If your superintendent leaves within a year, hey, we'll come back and, and do your superintendent, your next superintendent search for free if you'll have us. We're going to, I'll run through this, we'll do questions later. But this is the preparation phase and I won't go through every little bit of it for you because we've talked about most of these things in the process. And again, the key thing I want to point out is how careful we are to involve your community and your staff in the process and keep communications very open through that process. Here you'll see on the left-hand side of this where it says ESS, this is some of the things I was talking about before, compiling the information, helping to prepare the, the selection criteria and so on. And this is all the things we do. You can see what the board has to do. And then at the, on the other side, and I don't know who the person would be, but we'd need somebody here who helps us with the logistics. I kind of had a feeling that was her, but.
I'd like to introduce you to Don.
To Don? The logistics, she loves logistics.
Yes.
So we need, when it says district, that actually means Don. If I'd known that, I could have just put her name there. And again, I won't go through this, this whole thing, but suffice it to say that we, we've been doing this for 30 years and we know our business and we take a great deal of pride in, in buttoning it all up very tight and hoping to get the best possible candidate, keeping the community involved. So with that, I'll just leave that to you. It's getting late and I know you guys have been through a lot. It's going to be a lot more because, how many of you were here when you went through, well, you went through a full search before when you hired Brian?
I've been through, this will be my third superintendent search.
Okay. Then you know.
And we've been through two college president searches as well.
It's pretty time-intensive for you as a board. I mean, it's time-intensive, it's stressful and it just takes, takes extra, no, it's realistic. I gotta, no, I have to establish my expectations.
They're almost asleep now, don't, don't wake them up by telling them they're going to have to wait.
Okay, we'll talk about it in a different way then. Just one, one more note and then I'll open to questions, which is, I've worked with a few districts, and this is not you, but at the beginning, I like to real carefully define what we're looking for and what we have to offer, because that's why we ask in the focus groups, tell us the good things about this school. Now, you've got a ton of good things. I did my research and I'm going, you know, you're number 14 on Bridges, Bridge Magazine's list of achieving schools, high achieving schools. You're only one, you're one of two big districts. All those other ones were tiny little districts, either charter schools or, so you and Ann Arbor, Bloomfield Hills, Oakmuss, you're up there, you know, with the top. We tell people, here's what you're coming into. Because if there's a problem, and I've had some where we either had money problems or we had political problems or what have you, we put it up front. And we say, we need someone who's going to come in and embrace, and then we say, you know, our financial issue, or we've got a political issue going on in the community. We need someone who's going to be good at helping us through that. Now here, you've got, you've got an awful lot to offer somebody. So, again, I don't anticipate having to do that here. But it's important that that person coming in has realistic expectations about how many meetings they're going to have to go to and how much time it's going to take, so there's not a disconnect later on. And again, I can't, I have to tell this because I love it. One of those things you remember from graduate schools was, was called realistic job preview. And what they found was, the key study was, they took a bunch of potential Marines and and they showed them, one group John Wayne movies, you know, you know, kind of Guts and Glory movies. And they took another set of these potential Marines and they showed them what it was really like, like the reality shows, to, to become a Marine and then what it's like to be a Marine. What they found was, the people who were given the realistic picture of what they were going to be confronting, had a better fit. They lasted longer, they, they stayed with it more. So that's why it's important that board members know how much time it's going to take, as well as, as well as making sure that you're telling your superintendent, this is what we're looking for. And that's why the criteria is so important, because those criteria become your set of expectations. You can use them for evaluation purposes, you can use them, you know, to, to, to help guide that person in so many different ways. Those become really important parts to it. But it's establishing that expectation up front, and that's what makes a relationship sticky. I mean, it's good, it's good communication and it's that, where you're all on the same page, we have a common set of expectations. So with that, I think the expectation is that I'll finish right about now. But I tell you, the one other thing we do is that we work with that person if they want us to. You know, I, I become that person's mentor or, or whatever for the following year, you know, if they've got problems, if they've got issues, I'll call your new superintendent. Again, depending, I don't call someone who doesn't want to hear from me, but I'll call them once a month or so and say, how's it going, anything we can do for you? And just point them to resources, if you should get a person from out of state, this is more important, because then I can get them to the right people and tell them, you're going to have problems with the State Department of Education or something like that.
Yeah, I'm hoping we don't have problems with the State Department of Education.
But, but we'll help that through. And we do a, we do a follow-up session, kind of a roles and responsibilities session. So, and again, we let you decide when that's going to be. Usually, if you've got an experienced superintendent coming in, you might wait, you know, three months, and then, you know, Jay and I would come down and, and run through a roles and, roles and responsibilities workshop. But basically, it's fine tuning. And you're saying, how's it going? You know, does he, is he or she matching up? And how, how do you feel? And, you know, there's different ways you go at that, but that in the final analysis is, is what you're looking at, is how's it going and what can we do to help you? And we, as I said when I started, we are your association, we've done a lot of searches, we pride ourselves in it, and we'd love to work with Dearborn. I know you're, you are, I mean, I want to say unique, I mean, you're a very unusual school district in Michigan in so many ways.
So many ways.
So many ways. But to be, to be a, a large urban district with such a large population of free and reduced lunch and have this type of achievement says something really nice about your school district and your community. And even about your previous superintendent. And says a lot of good stuff about your school board as well. So you've done a good job, and what we'd want to do is.
It's all about the school board.
Yeah, it's all about the school board, right. So with that, I'll close and see if there's any questions or if you're, if I, basically, it's past my bedtime, so it might be past some of yours. So any questions?
Personally, I'm glad that you mentioned the services that you provide after a placement, because our board is, is kind of mixed at this point. We, we have some, you know, well-seasoned board members, and we have some in the middle, and then we have some newer board members. And so I think having those professional development opportunities are really good.
Good.
I think that we've tried really hard to, to get a good evaluation process and on a timely fashion, in a way that has set our superintendent up for success instead of, you know, ambush evaluations.
Right.
But being able to have someone that can help facilitate roles and responsibilities is helpful to us.
Great. And that's included in the price, you know, the only thing you pay is mileage.
I appreciate that. One of the questions that I have for you is that you have mentioned that you're in the middle of a search right now.
Right.
How is that going to affect your availability? Because my concern, the biggest, the biggest concern that I have for the search is that we have a very well-vetted process for what our expectations are.
Sure.
I want to make sure that when, when we send out that job description, that it is, that it is what we need.
Yeah.
And I know that if we put the work in upfront, that it'll help pay off.
It helps everything, everything else flows from that, correct. I'm down to the interview phase of that, of that, with that district. So we're, we've, we've done all the, the heavy lifting, a lot of the heavy lifting is at the beginning. And we've done the heavy lifting, so we're down to the interview phase, which, you know, frankly, is the easiest part for me, because it's primarily logistics and what we do in that situation, because we have a number of staff, Jay and I are working together on some things. So if, if I run into a time bind, then I, then I'm the least important in the person in the room at the interview phase. You know, doing, doing the, doing the upfront stuff, I don't want to say I'm the most important, but it's crucial that I be there for that upfront stuff. But if it gets down to, you know, I had this happen with one of the districts I worked with, Donna, you know, our, our director, took, took some of the steps, you know, that I couldn't, that I couldn't cover. So we just, you know, it, it would come down to, you, you become a priority because you're at a point where I'm needed, then we just, you know, use some of our staff, and we've got about 10 different consultants. In this case, you know, Jay and I have worked together both at Holt and would be working together here. So he could cover for me at, at Holt if I needed him to.
Trustee Vazin.
You have here your timeline for the search process. Being where we're at right now, do you think that we, this timeline would still work for us, or do you think we should expedite it?
Well, it's really hard to expedite. I mean, this is a pretty tight timeframe, in truth, three months is a pretty tight timeframe. And I don't, I think it's more important to do it right than to expedite it, frankly. So I have, I've, I've done some that were kind of expedited, but I, I would rather not. And I think you've got the time to do it right now. And you should be able to get, you know, it's, it's, it's a little tight to get someone here July 1st, but certainly by August 1st.
You don't think that that, I, I think that the start date is less important to us than getting candidates that are willing to, you know, still apply this late in the game.
Right.
You know, if, if you think that, I'm not concerned about not placing somebody until August, but I am concerned if you tell me that, you know, we got to get this job description out tomorrow, otherwise we're going to miss the boat.
No, no. Because that's what our placeholder does. Our placeholder says, we're open.
This is coming.
And this is coming, and we write a brief, almost like a little, it's an advertisement on your behalf, I mean, telling, telling the person, here's what Dearborn schools are like. 20,000 kids.
I don't think you could be brief.
Did it do.
No, you can't be brief.
Well, I mean, you've got a lot of good things going, but you, but you basically say, here's what it is. But then I tell the candidates, wait until we do the criteria to apply, because then you'll know.
Right.
How to, how to focus your application. Because I don't believe in a lot of smoke and mirrors and this stuff. Here's what we're looking for, prove to us that you've got those capabilities. And, and it's all, you know, just, you know, we're not, we're not, we're trying, not trying to hide what we're doing, it's not like a test. It's, it's more like a marriage than it is like a test, so it's making sure you get a good fit. And I'd rather take a little more time and, and do it than, than try to expedite it.
And as you alluded to earlier, this opening is not a secret. So there are plenty of candidates out there that are just basically waiting for that official announcement that it's now open and accepting applications. So I, I don't think that that's going to be a problem.
Trustee Vazin.
We know that your organization is also helping find the Wayne Risa superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
And Donna Oser mentioned in here that that would be an advantage to Dearborn Public Schools. How so?
I don't know if I agree with Donna.
That's what I was kind of wondering, I'm trying to figure out.
Well, she'll have a candidate pool before you do. So, so I mean, that's, you know.
And we get the leftovers?
Well, it's a fit. So, I mean, they're looking for somebody who's a certain type, you may not be looking for the same person.
Right.
Furthermore, you often, you know, if you get down to the last three or four, it's splitting hairs sometimes, and you really have a hard time deciding because you've got two really good candidates. So it's an advantage in the sense, we'll have that candidate pool, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that as one of our major advantages.
Okay, I just was curious that you even mentioned it.
Yeah, yes. I'll have to talk to her about that.
Yeah, Risa, Risa superintendencies and, and district superintendencies are, are different animals.
Yeah.
And you're going to track different candidates for both.
That's what I would think.
You'll have, you'll have, you know, you'll have candidates that will apply for both, but you'll have candidates that are better suited to, to, you know, do the day-to-day of a, of a Risa or an ISD, and some that are better suited for the day-to-day of a public, so.
We'll have that, we'll have that art teacher from the thumb who will apply.
For both.
For both.
For both.
But, you know, I said, when I get those applications, I have three piles. No way, which he's fallen into every time, maybe, and absolutely. And so, you know, you get 30 candidates, you'll have 10 of those that are no way. And then you, you use the criteria to decide then the rest.
You had talked about sharing the whole, all of the candidate's information, or sharing none with the board.
Yes.
My question is, do you let us know why you did or did not move them to the other piles?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Positively, positively. In fact, I.
Some of them, we might not need an explanation.
Right.
A lot of you won't.
Obviously, but some of them you might.
A lot of you won't. And then there are some, that's why, that's why I take pride in saying that we share